Good morning. It's Wednesday, August 9th, 2017, 9 o'clock on Senator Hearing Room, Courthouse Square, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. We started our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Well, our first item is always public comment. We usually have nobody taking advantage of that, but we do this morning. David Beam, you're here and you wanted to talk to us? Come on up and go ahead.
Commissioners, my name's David Beam. I'm an advocate for special needs population in Salem area for Marion County. I was wondering why come did the counties not looking at to have a advisor to the county commissioners for all the services in the county under you? And I was wondering if I can be advisor to county commissioners for Marion County, for all Marion County, for all the services for special needs population. That's what I want to do, and I want to work with you guys and make sure all the services there for all the businesses work with everybody better in Marion County. That's all I'm asking, to be an advisor to county commissioners as soon as possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, David.
Thank you. Thank you.
We had three presentations this morning, and the first is Economic Development, a SEDCOR fourth quarter report. Chad Freeman, Nick Carville. Angie, you could have been first, but I didn't still know how to say your last name. So Chad, Nick. Oh, well then you introduce her.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for the chance to talk to you today. As you said, SEDCOR is here to talk a little bit. My name is Chad Freeman, President of SEDCOR, and we're here to talk a little bit about the fourth quarter of 2016, 2017, as well as just give a kind of a glimpse into forecast for what next year looks like. First of all, I'd like to talk, start with a word of appreciation. Want to thank you for the Commissioners and the support that you guys give and the county gives for economic development and the constant focus on how jobs can help make this better and make our community better. Economic development is absolutely a team sport, and it's a pleasure to work someplace and have the support throughout all levels of that team, and we see it across, a good cross-section even today with Travel Salem, speaking as well just a little bit after us, but really a great representation of how we're working to grow jobs. Struck today that we are starting, as of July 1st, is our next fiscal years, and that will be 35 years that SEDCOR has been working on economic development in Marion Polk and Yamhill Counties. This is a great indicator of that support and the teamwork that we have working together. The fun part about going into our 35th year is that the last year's results were able to eclipse our previous record in terms of high numbers of revenue and investment for our communities. Last year, 2016, 2017, we saw almost $100 million of investment in Marion County. This has been encompassed between large companies and large projects that we've seen, Henningson Cold Storage, PAC Trust that we've mentioned in the past. So we've seen new investment from large companies. We've seen smaller companies, Benedictine Brewery among others, as companies look to grow and expand. And it's our belief and our work to help all of these happen here in the region, but it's just been a fantastic year, and we actually expect next year to be pretty comparable, if not even better. One of the things I think, and Nick gives me a tremendous hard time about getting stuck with numbers and Excel spreadsheets, but I saw, look, as we were talking about numbers this year, and it really came down to, you know, if we're talking about 100 new jobs, excuse me, $100 million in a new region, in our region, and almost 600 new and retained jobs, what does that mean? And so, again, being my weakness, being looking at a spreadsheet and trying to quantify that, for every $100 million invested, that means about $2 million on an annual basis to our communities that are coming flowing back to from tax revenue. So these are jobs that are going to help build, provide for sheriffs, provide for attorneys, pay for teachers. This is the property tax that we look as building our future, and really, we're building our future today. So with part of our investment, we're seeing, as I said, 600 new jobs, so we're seeing companies and families that are being supported, we're seeing communities that are being supported, and I think that's really been the epicenter and indicator of what this year has looked like. The other portion, just kind of a general interest, was listening on the radio today. It was 10 years ago today that we started to see the fall of 2007. So 10 years ago, the first bank, I believe that was working in subprime mortgages, were starting to not be able to pay their debts, we're starting to see the downfall that led into the global recession 10 years ago today. And you think now, employment levels, we have bounced back, employment levels have bounced back, we're seeing investments back bounce back. Unemployment now is 3.6, I believe, in our county. So we're back, we still have a long ways to go in terms of continuing to grow, but it was an interesting kind of moment in time conversation for me as well. So with that, we've talked a little bit about where we've been. What we see in the next couple of years, we continue to see ongoing investment. We've got new projects in the works and companies breaking ground and building new inventory, particularly for real estate, which we see has been an indicator and somewhat of a, something that was holding back our business community in terms of they didn't have space for that next, that next expansion, and we're seeing that being developed. We see more of that being developed in the near term. And we'll continue, as I said, expect next year to match this year's results, and then with the other focus then going forward continues to be, how do we continue to grow and skill up our workforce? I think that is going to be an ongoing challenge and something that we're going to continue to work with, and I know Nick has put a lot of effort into that as well. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to Nick Carville, talk a little bit more about what we're doing on the ground.
Good morning, Commissioners. As Chad said, we've grown the job pool quite substantially. It's actually creating a problem with workforce. I've been with several companies over the last, just the last few weeks, who are actually turning down work because they don't have the people. I have a manufacturer in a small community that's looking for 60 employees and six engineers right now, and they have to build room, they have to consolidate their operations, and they're being courted by the state of Texas pretty heavily to do their expansion there. Trying to keep them in Marion County, trying to keep them in Oregon. But workforce and housing have become serious problems in some of the communities. Affordable workforce housing, and we're working with some of the communities to address these issues. We continue to work with the high schools to try and create a future workforce. We need all that we can get. One of my manufacturers here in the county actually turned down a multimillion dollar sales line because he couldn't find enough people to continue to manufacture these goods. And he got frustrated and said, we're just, we're done. He's got plenty of other work, but it was a substantial piece of revenue that he turned down because he can't find the people. And he presently owns like 22 houses for his employees, so he has affordable living for them. So we continue to work on that. Expansions are at all kinds of levels, food processors, manufacturers. Some of the ag people are starting to expand into new markets besides hazelnuts and blueberries. They're experimenting now with hemp, not marijuana, commercial hemp that's crushed and used for the oil, has great medicinal factors to it, and olive trees. They're experimenting with olive trees over here. They've had them in Yamhill County, now they're trying some of them over here. So there's great growth going on. Everybody is, the construction industry is, they have, the guys have glassy look on their face because there's so much work. There's bids going out for jobs that don't get anybody bidding on the job because everybody's at capacity. So it's a good problem to have, but a problem, and we're doing all we can to try and solve that. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
I've got a question. It's interesting to me to hear this because, well, I've been reading about it too, so it's not a surprise, but I recall when we met with Ray Burstow way back when on the reentry initiative, and we're putting together ideas for employees to, in food processing and different sectors, construction, and then all of a sudden, the economy went south, and there were all these people who were unemployed, and so our folks were kind of looked over because you had other people that had been laid off, and they were, so now we're kind of back where perhaps the reentry initiative employees might be more marketable in the system. So I'm wondering, have we checked back in, a sheriff and undersheriff are in the back of the room here? Are we working together to make sure that they're getting the skill sets to our guys that they need in order to meet the need that you all are seeing?
I've been working with Deb, JR.
Okay, good.
Pretty closely.
All right.
She understands, she's seen a lot of the skill set information that we've created over the last six, seven years.
Uh huh.
So, yeah.
If we need to ramp some things up, though, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I mean, if there's that big a demand for employees, and we have, last I heard, I mean, we were around the 50% range, and then I think it went down to under 50%, but we still have a lot of people that are looking for jobs.
Yeah, and I know that's one of the things that we do to help that. The first piece that you touched on is absolutely people are getting second looks that wouldn't have five, 10 years ago, as we talked about, and a chance to prove themselves, and I think that is a great opportunity that our market has and something that I'm glad to see. And to do that, we are directly connecting companies with, as Nick said, with Deb. In fact, just got an email a week ago from one of the folks that we had helped coordinate that, and they're actively looking for people, and you've got a great resource there, and one we'll continue to push. I think that is an absolute strength for us in our region, and appreciate your work in getting that set up, because I think that is going to be a competitive advantage for us.
And I guess the other question I have is, we have our jobs council in sight, so what can we do as policymakers on that board to, and we've got a new director now, and so we want to look at how do we marshal those resources and the best way to meet the needs that you're talking about?
Great, great question, thank you. And then Kim Parker, Kim Parker Uranus.
Yeah, I don't know her last name.
Yeah. I know, and I apologize to Kim if I butchered her last name. It's going to be a great asset to that organization, and I think when she and I spoke, our focus was how do we help existing employers? In the past, recently, it's definitely been geared towards youth, and that is an absolute strength of that organization, they need to keep focus on that. But I do think right now, we've got an opportunity to help local employers hire some of those, some of the folks that she's working with. So how do we help continue to build out that connection directly to businesses or something that we're working on on a regular basis? So I think as Commissioners, my request would be just to help her keep that focus on how do we help business and how do we continue to grow? And I look at that not just in a how do we help business, but as we grow those jobs, then we help the employees and the people on the ground that you're referring to, and I think there's a very big opportunity here for that organization to tie in directly to businesses and to start strengthening that connection. Great, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can we, please, to follow up? Maybe not. So just to follow up to Commissioner Carlson, in fact, yesterday, we just had a business implementation meeting. Deb was there at Dave's Killer Bread, and we're working on this, trying to bring the summit, the Second Chance Summit, to bring employers together with some of the resources that are here in town, and I know you'll be a part of that as we get more of the plans, because there's a real opportunity, I think. What did you say, 50% unemployment with people?
Is that the number, Troy, or Sheriff, do you know where we're at in terms of our guys that are employed, are coming out of prison? I thought Jeff said, I thought Jeff said it was around, it was between 40 and 50% at this point, something like that. Yeah.
Yeah. So it'll be a real good opportunity for individuals that need the jobs as well as, you know, connecting them up, and I think your point is, is are we getting the right skill set that they can come out? You know, the soft skills really is important, as we know with youth as well. So really appreciate your realization, you know, serving on the board with you, it's like, okay, everything is being pushed by our talent right now, or lack of talent resources. In fact, James LaBarre reminds me, it's not workforce, it's talent that we're looking for. So we're trying to change that terminology. Looking forward to working with our new insight executive director as well.
Great.
Thanks for all you do.
Just a point of clarification, that Second Chance Summit, is there a date on that?
We have not set the date. The kickoff will be here in Salem, and then we'll take it around the state is the plan, into several different regions.
Certainly anything we can do.
Yeah, we're working, we should have a date probably within the next 30 to 60 days.
Okay. Great, thank you. All right, very good. These are the good times we'll be looking back on sometime, that's what I get out of it, but let's hope we can string it out a while longer.
We'll hope we can string it out, and we'll do everything we can.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next.
Kevin says it. Kevin can say it really well, why don't you have him say it?
No, just say it really, just say it really fast.
Would you introduce Angie for us, please? Economic Development, Travel Salem, fourth quarter report.
Yeah, just the wonderful Angie Aminucci.
Very good.
Oh, it was.
It's very close.
Did I say it?
Anyuucci.
Anyuucci.
But that was really close.
I forgot the Anyuucci.
Mucci.
Anyuucci.
All right. Angie, it's really good to see you in spite of Kevin's inability, but go ahead and tell us what's going on in Travel Salem. I know it's busy.
Throw me under the bus.
What's happening.
Well, good morning, Commissioners, and thank you, Commissioner Brintano, for having, and Commissioners for having me here this morning. It's always a delight to come and talk to you about what's happening in tourism, and it's certainly a bustling quarter that I'm going to be talking about. We're going to be talking about the fourth quarter of 2016, 17, so that's April, May, and June activity. So I just handed out some fresh materials to you. There's a bit more information in there than I provided earlier, and I'll walk you through that. So in the fourth quarter, we had, under public relations, so this is media pushing, we're pushing stories from the community here out to international press. We had 186 articles published, we reached about 21 million folks through that publicity with an advertising equivalency of about 583,000. So if we had to purchase that exposure, that's how much we would have paid for that. But it's technically free advertising, and it's actually more meaningful to a consumer to read a story that has more authenticity to it than a placed ad. So a lot of success there in the fourth quarter. Our visitor information network, which has multiple locations that are listed there, serviced over 61,000 visitors during those three months, that's almost record-breaking. This region is getting a ton of visitation, folks coming from all over the world. We're seeing folks from Brazil, Italy, China, Canada, and Germany. Those are kind of the top ones at the moment. Under marketing, we completed our branding process in that fourth quarter, and on the first page of the report that I share with you, there are some examples of that new brand. You can see it's bold, it's positive, it's got the yes to it, meaning we're encouraging people to take a look at what we have here, and there's a lot of different spins on how we're promoting that out. We wanted to reposition the image of this community to more align with what Portland visitors would be looking at, what they would be interested in coming to see, and appealing to their, their sort of perceptions or things like that. The Willamette Valley Visitors Association that we also participate in, we presented a strategic plan for that group to the Travel Oregon Commission, and we were able to secure $1.3 million budget for that. Irene Bernards on my staff will be chairing the Willamette Valley Visitors Association in these coming couple of years. Just so you know, we went from about $250,000 for WAVA's budget to $1.3 million, and that's a direct result of the last two sessions ago when the legislature increased the transient occupancy tax collection for the state from 1% up to 1.8%. And so part of those funds are dedicated, in fact, 20% of the 1.8% that's collected statewide is dedicated back to WAVA from the collections here in this region. And the Willamette Valley Visitors Association, just as a reminder, serves all the way down to Eugene and all the way up into Clackamas County. Travel Salem was, and Commissioner Cameron, you'll appreciate this inherently, Travel Salem was named the official designee of the Wine Country License Plate Funds going forward, so we will no longer be having to do an MOU with Willamette Valley Visitors Association for those funds. We'll be receiving them direct from Travel Oregon. We hired a new market, did you want to say?
That's good, that's really good news. After, how many years has that been? Five, six?
Six, six years.
Six years?
Yeah.
I'm still upset I didn't get 00001.
I know. That's not my fault necessarily.
I wasn't a senator.
Oh, you were a co-sponsor, though. You were the one that helped make it happen, so forever grateful. We hired Grant McGill, a new position for marketing coordinator. That's something that we've really lacked, is some additional bandwidth in our marketing program, and you'll understand why as I continue through all of the different things that we're delivering. We really needed some additional lifting there. He comes with a lot of digital background, a lot of social media background, and he's going to really help us get the job done. On page two of the report, we had a social media influencer in to Salton, Silverton, in the North Saniam River County, country, excuse me. So that's when we actually sort of pay to bring somebody in who has like a lot of social media influence. They might have tens of thousands of, and 100,000 subscribers to either their blogs or their Twitter feed or their Instagram channel. And so we have them come in and we, they basically take over their channels with our content, and so they were featuring Silverton in the North Saniam River Country during that quarter. We had three photos that were shared from that Instagram, on Instagram, with 70,000 followers in this case specifically, resulting in over 2,000 engagements. Six posts were shared to Twitter with 18,900 plus followers, resulting in 80 engagements. And they produced a blog post as well and some Snapchat content. That might seem like a little bit of content, but you can see that just a few photos, a few posts goes a really long way in helping reach new consumers with our messaging. From a content provider that these subscribers trust, they actually subscribe to these channels, they want to hear what these folks have to say. So that's really influential content, and it doesn't cost us much to do that. We launched Facebook and Instagram ads to promote the Salem Ale and Cider Trail that I talked with you about last time. We had over 1,600 click-throughs to travelsalem.com and over 272,000 impressions from that work. We also launched a social media giveaway, 100,000, oh, sorry, 100,000, I wish, 100,000, I did it again, 1,000 plus consumers entered the giveaway in June alone with 600 subscribing to our e-newsletter. So that promotion will continue for a while, and we're already over a couple thousand consumers that have entered that giveaway. We launched the Tri-County Bounty Landing Page, and the first promotion added was our Tri-County Charm Trail, which I'll talk to you about in a second. We created a TripAdvisor animated online ad campaign, and there's an example there in the middle of that page there. You can see the image, and that's actually animated, meaning it has some movement to it to catch the consumer's attention, and if they click on that, it takes them directly to specific content that we're promoting on TripAdvisor. We scheduled three National Geographic traveler ads, and the one that will be running for Marion County, which will feature adventure and photography, will run in October, November issue, so that'll be coming up soon. We also hosted a social media influencer that visited quite a few places in Polk County as well as Salem. We finished an ad campaign to promote Travel Oregon's Wine Country, which resulted in almost 2,000 click-throughs to Travel Salem and 183,000 impressions in June. We hosted a freelance writer who visited the Grand Hotel, the Willamette Valley Vineyards, downtown Salem, and she's working hard to promote that content out. We also hosted the editor of Willamette Valley Living Magazine for a one-day fam tour, and they visited the Halli Ford Museum of Art, the OSH Museum of Mental Health, Peter Courtney Mento Bridge, Willamette Heritage Center, and a couple of great restaurants. Page three, we place sponsored content articles on OregonLive.com, which is the online version of the Oregonian, and the content encourages Portland residents to visit the mid-Willamette Valley. We also are working on 360-degree videos. Those are currently in development, we're filming until November. For Marion County, you can see the cities there that we're featuring. Each city, Salem, Kaiser, Woodburn, Aurora, Mount Angel, Silverton, Stateon, and Detroit, signed up for this. It's a free service that we're providing, and we're creating a 360-degree video promoting each of those communities, and we'll be posting those on our website, but also pushing them out to other content providers as well. On the recreational sports marketing side, you can see during the quarter, we had half a dozen really amazing sporting events here, Capital Cup Soccer, Salem Rugby, Vanderbilt University Baseball, we had a flag football team in here with 350 attendees, American Legion Baseball, and the hoop tournaments, and you can see the economic impact of those. The hoop tournaments, which had about 12,675 attendees, used almost 8,500 room nights here with a value of almost $3 million in economic impact for that tournament alone. We hosted the 2017 Governor's Conference on Tourism. That conference does rotate to different communities in the state. There's about three communities in Oregon that actually can host that conference because it's gotten so large. We had the largest attendance ever here in Salem for that in, let's see, I think that was in May this year. We had an event that we held on Monday evening up at Willamette Valley Vineyards for 500 plus attendees. That was the largest event that Jim Bruno had ever hosted up there as well, and it was fabulous. We had eight different food vendors that provided hors d'oeuvres and wine tastings and live music, it was really, really wonderful. All of those delegates come from around the state, they go back to their communities and hopefully talk about the wonderful experience they've had here in this beautiful region, and we'll promote that out to the visitors that come to their communities as well. We also had two familiarization tours for the travel and words writers that came during that period. These are travel writers that came to a conference, and we hosted a couple of fam tours to get them out into the community to actually experience the assets we had here. Very well received, they were doing a lot of social media activity while they were on ground, but they've also gone back and have continued to promote the community. We do plan to host a couple of them back here, and we'll be participating with that conference in the future as well. On the destination development side, there's a ton of PR content in here on a couple of follow-up pages that list the different publications that we secured, and the value of that exposure, the reach of that exposure, and what assets were featured. I won't go through that, but in the packet, there's a flyer on the Ale and Cider Trail passport, which I talked with you about last time, but here, today, I was going to talk to you about our Tri-County Charm Trail. You also have a brochure in your packet from that. We began this project in about August of 16, completed it in June. This is funded by Wine Country Plate Money, so this promotes both Marion Polk and Yamhill Counties. You can see under the participants that are included, Marion County by far has the majority of participants in this. It costs $50 for folks to participate, the rest was underwritten by Wine Country Plate Money, and all of the different participants selected a charm, a wine glass charm, so it's the kind of charm you can put along the stem of a wine glass, and each of the participants chose a custom charm, and they're handing those out at their locations on this charm trail. So as visitors go around, they can actually collect all of them. Believe it or not, folks really love doing that sort of thing, and it's gotten off to a bang. We've already had two partners have to reorder, so it's doing very well. I don't have statistics on it yet for you, but I will report back to you in the very near future. The other thing I wanted to share with you, there's a little bit more detail on this I referenced to you back under National Geographic and Oregonian content. So there are two sheets in your packet, they're the same thing, but I had to print it two different ways so that you could see all the content. This is the article that's promoting Marion County on Oregon.live that will run in October, November. It's titled, "Wineries and Vibrant Gardens Allow Visitors to Sample All That Marion County Has to Offer." It's an article that we actually wrote, and we've sponsored this content. So you can read the actual article there if you're interested, but the other page that has sort of these screenshots on it- that has sort of these screenshots on it shows the other sponsored content, how this article is working on the OregonLive.com website. You can see that we have an ad placed at the top there promoting Enchanted Forest, and it says, yes, we have fairy tales here. So it's that whole new brand campaign that we have. You can see along the right-hand side that there are other sort of pieces of content, our Facebook channel is posted here, our Twitter feed, our Instagram, and a blog. And so all of that is sponsored content. So as a visitor visits this article to read more about what's happening in Marion County, they can also, you know, jump in and get in deeper into the content that we provided there. I wanted to share with you why this is important. The OregonLive.com website has about 221,000 hits or visits a month from the Seattle market. So we're not only targeting the Portland market with this content, but we're targeting also the Seattle market. There are other sort of entry points, Boise and others that use OregonLive.com for content, but we were specifically targeting the Seattle visitor as well. So there you have it. Thanks for letting me ramble on as I am wont to do, get too excited about this stuff, and be happy to answer any questions. And thank you again for serving on our board, Commissioner Brinchino. I know that you do double duty in that fashion, so thank you.
Thank you. We're going to talk about some, and we don't need to talk about any more. It's kind of pleased to have you not talk about the eclipse very much, so I'm sure that we're experiencing burnout. That's all I can tell you. Please.
I was just thinking maybe how to get some more charm for...
I'm afraid of this already, go ahead.
Well, so if you go to like, for example, the Bush House Museum, you purchase the charm?
No, it's free.
So you just have to ask for it?
Free to the consumer, yes.
Okay. So you go to a winery and you have a glass of wine and you ask for the charm?
Mm-hmm.
Pretty cool.
I'll be at Thorndale Garden tonight.
I think I might go get me a charm bracelet.
I see, you look good in it.
Aww.
All right, anything else, Angie?
Well, I mean, on the eclipse, I mean, you know that everybody's on high alert, everything is starting to come together. It is going to be challenging for our community. I've talked with downtown restaurants in particular about how they're going to prepare to feed folks, because we are anticipating they're going to run out of food, the grocery stores will run out of food. So can they park? There's consideration around parking these refrigerated trucks downtown so they can actually restock more efficiently, because trucks will probably not be able to get in. I've also just recently heard that there's some major road shutdowns or road construction on Wallace Marine, sorry, not Wallace, Wallace Road, excuse me, and then River Road is also closed through a significant portion due to roadslides or rock slides or something like that. And it will be reopening on Eclipse Day, and that's a thorough fair, obviously, out to Independence. And then we got notice that the Willamette National Forest is also closing. There was some confusion on our end about whether or not camping was still going to be allowed, so we're trying to get some clarification from that, because the notice that did come out, did refer to camping and that folks were still doing that, but everything else was closed, so it was a little confusing. But we are getting, we're probably fielding a good 100 phone calls a day from visitors with questions about how to get here. Rental car reservations have been overbooked, people are struggling to try to figure out the train. Amtrak booked another train down here, it sold out in 48 minutes. So it's going to be challenging, we're as ready as we can be. Our staff will have the visitor center open on that day, and we're trying to decide if they're going to actually sleep on site, so that they'll be able to be there bright and early to help folks out. So anyway, yeah, really appreciate your team's support and work, public safety, transportation, all of it has been wonderful. So you guys are doing a great job, and we'll be as ready as you can as well.
And you might be interested, the next report is from Ed Flick, emergency management.
Yeah, I'm going to send my...
And I thought you might want to stay and listen in on that.
Marcella Guerrero, who is our Destination Development Manager, who's been on the ground on the eclipse thing since the beginning, I don't know that she was aware of the meeting and the presentation today, so I'm going to walk back and have her come over, because she's really the expert on our role and sort of how we've been helping and integrating into that. I'm just kind of useless in that way, yeah.
All right, Angie, thank you.
Just to clarify, that road is supposed to be open on the 19th.
Which one?
The River Road.
Open on the 19th?
Yes.
Okay.
We had to do it now because of the federal funds that were available due to the slide and the emergency, we had to get it done now. So it's supposed to be open on the 19th.
That's very good news, I will let staff know that, for sure. Okay, thank you. Thanks for all your support.
If we wanted the money, we didn't have to.
All right. Ed Flick, Emergency Management, what's the right word? You're the one, anyway, guru would work.
Czar.
Czar. But he's been doing double duty, I don't know if you'll get into it. Angie brought up some questions with the Jefferson, the White Horse Fire, I know you've been working on that hard and how it affects this, but I'll let you go ahead, perhaps we'll have some questions.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board. I'm Ed Flick, I'm the County Emergency Manager, and I'm joined by...
Pam Hutchinson, Marion County Health Department.
I'll just say right up front, the coordination with Travel Salem has been great through the months leading up to this, and a lot of what we know about the visitor load is coming from them. That's the safest way to view the eclipse. The question I'm often asked is how many people are coming, and of course, with the information we get every day from Travel Salem and looking at various sources, we're looking at Craigslist, we're trying to find where people may be coming to, the number varies anywhere from 100,000 to 500,000. And there's a lot of things that are going to happen in the next several days that will impact that number, to include the weather on the coast and the impact on the closure of the Jefferson area due to the fire. More important to me, though, are these questions. When are they coming? Our colleagues in central Oregon worked with their travel folks and did a survey. And the survey that they put out broadly to people planning to come to Bend and Redmond indicated an even distribution of visitors, really starting Thursday all the way through Sunday. So for us, the event really begins Wednesday, getting ready to be fully mission capable on Thursday. Departures from central Oregon are evenly distributed Monday and Tuesday. We think that the most impacted day for Highway 22, for example, is actually going to be on Tuesday. So we don't plan on ending our deliberate efforts until late Tuesday night. We've also been very interested to know where people are going in the county. We've been actively searching for events, starting with the formal ones that we learned about from Travel Salem, and adding events as we learn about them from fire districts and other sources. This is important because we want to make sure the dispatch centers have the best possible information to send help, and if a campground has some name that doesn't really exist in a day-to-day world, we want to make sure that we can rapidly help get the right assistance to the right place. So we've been building this map using the County GIS, and we'll be distributing this through the EOC to the dispatch centers. The most likely impacts, as everybody knows, is the crashing traffic. ODOT has described this as a record-setting traffic day. We also expect that cell phone service is going to be tremendously impacted. I participated on a national level call the other day, and the good news is, there's been some work by Sprint and Verizon to add services to the county, but it will not likely be enough, and there'll be certainly times where cell service is not available. We've been encouraging people through social media to encourage text, to include text to 911, which is a new service in the county. Angie talked about the possible food shortages and fuel. We've been in close coordination with the Oregon Department of Energy, and they've been messaging to wholesalers, and we've been talking to suppliers here, Carson Loane and others, about their plans to maintain as much fuel into the area as possible. And Oregon Department of Energy is prepared to work with us in case we have immediate fuel needs at hospitals or other centers. Of course, all of that depends on getting people through traffic. Things not likely impacted, though, include the electrical grid, landline telephone, and the internet. Several months ago, we thought the most dangerous thing we'd be dealing with was the potential for fire, and then late last month, that became a reality. And as of today, the Whitewater Fire is approximately 5,500 acres in the Jefferson Park area. Still generally in the wilderness. Fortunately, the westerly winds in the last several days have kept the fire away from Highway 22, and we look forward to cooler weather, which may help get us through the next couple of weeks. All it will take, though, is a return of easterly winds, and we'll see the fire threat return to Highway 22 and communities. I want to point out, though, that there is currently no foreseeable impact on the communities of Detroit, Idana, and we're working with the community of Brighton-Bush, and Lynn County is working with Marion Forks to make prudent preparations. Where we don't have facts, we work with assumptions, and one of the big assumptions was, we just don't think there's going to be a lot of opportunity for mutual aid. Public safety services depend a lot on each other in their activities, and each of the districts is going to be very, very impacted. So we don't think there'll be a lot of mutual aid inside the county or from other counties. There are some fire districts that are signed up to be part of the state mobilization plan for structural teams, and we almost sent a team, in fact, this morning before that was canceled. I talked about the food and fuel shortages. One of the considerations we've had has been that visitors from outside the state are going to have a variety of languages. So we've been looking at how we can accommodate them through timely and accurate public information. I'm happy to say the Health Department will have a Spanish-speaking public information person working in the EOC helping us with that, and then we have Language Alliance. The traffic is just something we're not going to be able to work everywhere, but I'll talk about what we're going to do to do the best we can. Staff, both in public and private organizations, will be impacted particularly on Monday. That's been something that the health agencies have been working at. So they've been making plans, like we heard Travel Salem, maybe having staff spend the night in the facility, things like that are happening. There's a number of impacts across each of the emergency support functions, I won't go into these each, but really, the potential impacts here range from fire to public health, energy, communications. I'll spend the next couple of minutes just dividing up what we're doing to be ready for the event, and then what we're going to do during the event. As I mentioned, we've been trying to get as good a picture of this event as possible so we can distribute that picture. And the key to success for us is going to be multi-agency coordination, and I'll talk about a tool we're going to use to help doing that. But the old-fashioned way of doing that has just been a lot of meetings and discussion and cross-talk with all the affected jurisdictions, to include the public meetings the board participated in. We've got a good plan to staff the Emergency Operations Center, both at Public Works and also Forward in Detroit. We've been working on public safety communications to make sure that we have the best possible systems in place for providing communication to police, fire, EMS. We spend a lot of time in public information planning. You've seen a very deliberate social media presence that County PIO, Jill and Kelly's been leading up with Salem, and also with Public Health and Emergency Management Partners and Law Enforcement. We've been giving thought to mass casualty planning with the hospitals and EMS agencies, and that's an ongoing effort. And good news is that most of the districts are adding capacity, so we're going to have a peak amount of capacity available during this event. And of course, we're particularly concerned about the medical resources up in the eastern part of the county and in the rural parts of eastern Marion County. We've also been looking at developing site plans for sites themselves. It's very important that when a 911 call arrives to the dispatch, that the person describes where they're at, the dispatcher understands where that is and can get help there. So we've been working on these pre-plans. This is an example in Powerland. We're going to be working on one for Brighton-Bush this afternoon. In the response, again, the period of activity for us really begins on Wednesday, next week, getting ready, and then through the week into Tuesday of the next week, we'll be working principally to manage and to try and make the best possible efforts to maintain the flow of traffic on critical routes. The EOC will be staffed with personal emergency management staff, the Marion County Sheriff's Office, Marion County Fire Defense Board, Marion County Public Health. We're going to have a health liaison from Oregon Health Authority, liaison with Red Cross, various state agencies. And public information, we've, we're going to be operating in sort of multi-agency coordination initially, but we have plans to establish the Marion County Multi-Agency Joint Information Center with our friends at CCTV, should that become a necessity, and we practice that. So as much as the EOC is going to be working on maintaining the flow of traffic, we're going to be prepared to do something more complex, and that could be the response to a wild-owned fire and evacuation. In order to make sure we have the best ability to do that in the eastern part of the county, we'll be cooperating with the Sheriff's Office to operate a mobile emergency operations center at the Detroit Rangers Station during the period, really Wednesday through Tuesday. That'll help us coordinate with those agencies and those communities. We'll also be operating a first aid station up in Detroit, so we can provide the best possible care for patients and hopefully reduce the number of people transported to the hospital, and help support patients in the evacuation becomes a problem. Again, just multi-agency coordination is the key to this, and the investments we made last year in planning and executing Cascadia Rising exercise are paying off this year with participation in the EOC. We'll be launching a web-based collaboration tool that is new for us, but it's going to allow agencies to have a secure access into information, and it has chat features, and we'll be basically providing that comment operating picture visually for people. A new thing that I'm really excited about is the ability to plan and then post a map of road closures in the event of a closure. And we think there'll be closures either from traffic accidents or deliberately. This map will be distributed to the dispatch centers, and that will help them give the best possible pre-arrival information to things like ambulances. We think this is going to be a capability that is going to be useful for floods and other things as well. At this time, we don't plan on making this a public-facing map, because these routes will be particularly to facilitate movement of emergency vehicles. ODOT has been really proactive in planning, some 20 vehicles will be out maintaining the flow of traffic, and they'll be joined by an equally respectable Public Works presence on the county road system, helping to keep visitors moving and clearing roads when necessary. We're really proud of the first aid station that our volunteers are going to be staffing at the Detroit Station. With a combination of Marion County Emergency Management volunteers and state volunteers, we're going to be offering advanced life support level of care at Detroit Station from Thursday through Tuesday. And this is the first time we've had this team working at that level of care. This is the same team that was providing first aid at Brooks during steam-up last week. We do it about five times a year. But with the support of Dr. Stephen Vets from the Saniam Hospital, we're going to be able to provide real meaningful care to people at Detroit. The board, we really appreciate the procurement of these ambulances as well, and we finalized coordination with the Marion County Fire Defense Board and the ambulance board yesterday evening for the control of these ambulances. It'll add an additional amount of capacity to a very strange system. I will add that all of the transport agencies have added cars, and I think that we'll have, really, we're doing everything we can to make sure the best availability of emergency medical assets during the eclipse. Yesterday, we completed coordination with the Army National Guard. You might have heard in the press that the governor is mobilizing soldiers... You might have heard in the press that the governor is mobilizing soldiers and airmen to support the eclipse. And they honored our request for a platoon-sized element that will have Humvees and a couple of those trucks. They're going to focus initially in the eastern part of the county, and they'll be a resource to us to extend traffic control efforts with the Sheriff's Office and help us in the unlikely event of an evacuation. They'll be plugged into the EOC and they'll work for me. I mentioned public information. The picture there on the lower left is actually the Joint Information Center that was established last year during Cascadia Rising with city, hospital, special district, SED Corps staff. Really, a whole community effort to coordinate public information. That team will be working and has been working to provide relevant and actionable information to the public now, and will be prepared to stand up that operation with great and welcome assistance from CCTV. I'm also happy to report that the investment the the county's made in extending emergency alert access in the county in the canyon is paying off, and we think KYAC will be broadcasting from their new antenna as early as this weekend. The board has also assembled with Emergency Management Assistance this guide along the lower right, and we intend to distribute that with printed information to give information to visitors to find things. There will be an effort here that we'll see, starting next week. Two-on-one is a is an alternative to nine-one-one. We're going to be advertising that through media. And that's going to allow people who don't need emergency help but have questions to go to two-on-one. And in coordination with the Oregon Office of Emergency Management, we've been working with two-on-one to provide as much information as we can to help people find things in Marion County. And then those calls will actually come to us if two-on-one can't answer the question. I'm happy to report there's very few issues at this time with our deliberate planning. The the item of greatest concern is, of course, the the fire burning in the Jefferson area. The Whitewater Fire really started in middle of last month, but has has continued to grow and is uncontained at this time. The westerly winds have been a great help, and we think cooler weather may keep that going into the eclipse week. But the impact of the closure of the Jefferson area in the Willamette National Forest is certainly going to impact on visitor experience. So we're working now to understand where those other people may go and looking at impacts on Little North Fork and up into the the wilderness area there and also eastern Marion County. Finally, everybody just needs to think about the ability to do their business on on the twenty-first in particular. And since so many businesses rely on cell phones, people are going to have to rely on other means of communication. Not many people have traditional phones anymore. In particular, we're concerned about home health and their ability to reach clients at home. We had a emergency preparedness workshop with fifteen medical businesses yesterday to include three of the four home health agencies in the county. And the EOC will be an asset and a resource to them should they need assistance to 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 get to their clients. And finally, the viewer's safety issue, and I think that's the segue.
All right, little technical thing there. So, yeah, that was a nice segue into. You can see there's been a lot of collaboration. And the Health Department is holding a pre-eclipse event tomorrow, which is open to the public. And it's in collaboration with Emergency Management. They're helping us to operate this. The point of it is to, on one hand, we've been putting out information about safe viewing because that's a real concern. You know, everybody wants to look at this, but how do you do it safely? So we'll be, we've ordered a few thousand of those funny-looking glasses that you can wear that have been tested and proven safe for viewing. And we're going to be doing what we call a POD or a Point of Dispensing Clinic to distribute these. And it provides us with an opportunity to train and prac- train staff and practice our plans for, say, we had a pandemic flu situation where we had to get out a lot of vaccine or some other kind of public health emergency where we needed to move a lot of people through a clinic in an efficient manner. So we'll be practicing this, and it's free and open to the public. It's tomorrow, the tenth, from three to seven, as supplies last. It's at the Health Department on Center Street, and first come, first served, no appointments needed. So we look forward to seeing a lot of people there. We're understanding there's a lot of interest. So we've been working with the City on Traffic Control and things like that, so. Any questions?
Other questions? Well, then, for both of you, I know how much thought you've done in planning. And I think I heard it from you, Ed, and think we're ready to go. I think also to be flexible, deal with what comes up and and respond, and here we go.
So I think maybe we ought to talk a little bit. Maybe, John, you could talk about what the public might be able to expect for Marion County on the day of the eclipse because I know we're going to be open, right? But there probably will be a number of people who won't be able to get into work that day, so.
Well, the county will be open, all of our. The question is whether people can get to work or not in a timely fashion. Some of the buildings will be locked during the eclipse so that the employees can go out and watch it. But it will only be during that time when the eclipse is taking place, and they'll be back to work then afterwards. I did have a question about, we're going to have a lot of people here. And I'm, there is a concern that I hope the Health Department has thought about of a major public health issue that might develop because of all these people coming from all over the world. And I know we've practiced those kinds of things, but it could be difficult to get emergency medical help to a vast number of people who might have gotten bad water or now somebody's brought in a disease that's beginning to go around. Could you talk a little bit about that, Pam?
When you have large groups like this and camping out and everything, foodborne illness is probably one of the biggest risks. I guess on the good side is that's usually not an immediate onset. It's going to be a couple of days later. And actually, some people may have left the area by then. But one of the things that we're doing to help prevent that is by using the map that Emergency Management has put together with all the events. Our sanitarians have been working with, you know, people who are holding those events to make sure that they've got their control measures in place, you know, people with food cards. And a lot of them are actually using food trucks, which are already inspected and are, you know, meet the standards. So that will help there as well.
Good. All right. Anything else?
I think it's important to note, too, that we had this. You might have, like, tweaked this PowerPoint a little bit since last week, right? But it's pretty much the same PowerPoint for our department heads and elected officials at our Thursday morning meeting and really talked with them about making sure that all of our employees are prepared. I think my biggest concern is that I've been hearing this to the point where I'm like, okay, you know, this is like the fifteenth time I've heard this. But I know there are people out there. I mean, I know there are people out there that will go, what? An eclipse on the day that it happens? I mean, there's bound to be a person or two out there. And then and then there are going to be a group of people that didn't know they should have gone grocery shopping and didn't know they shouldn't be on I-5, even though they knew there was an eclipse. They're just kind of, you know, like, clueless about it. And so the more that we that have been sitting in these meetings can share things on Facebook, get the information out. I mean, I really think it's everybody's responsibility to make sure their friends and their neighbors and their family are prepared for this. And the county can only do so much in terms of getting the information out. So I would just, if anyone's listening to this, really plead, ask for people to to share this. It'll be interesting.
I I think we can all count on it being interesting.
I have some glasses in my pocket, isn't that handy?
Right, I think McDonald's is doing a fantastic job.
You got glasses? I do. I don't quite know where I got them from, but I couldn't see very well, so I scratched out that. No, don't do that. Okay. Thank you very much, both of you. So our next item is our consent calendar. Commissioner Cameron, you're going to make that motion and some changes, please.
Before I move the consent calendar, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we will take item number four from our action calendar under Finance and move it to the consent calendar. And I will also move that we add to our action multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan and community wildfire protection plan update.
Will we put that under Public Works or do, where would you like to place that on the agenda?
Public Works.
Okay. All right, I'll second the motion.
I've been moved and seconded to take item four, move it to consent and to have an action item as the wildfire plan. Further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, and now the consent.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, I will move under the consent calendar first under the Board of Commissioners OLCC application recommended approval for Flourishing Palm Cellars LLC, Salem, Oregon. Under Public Works, approve a purchase order with Shaw Industries, Inc. in the amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-nine cents for the purchase and installation of flooring at the Public Works Building through December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. And under Finance, consider approval of a quick claim deed to convey real property tax ID number R-three-three-one-two-six located at seven-four-nine-two Twin Fir Lane South, Salem.
Second to motion.
I've been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Just read, any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes, thank you. First action item is under Board of Commissioners. We consider approval of an Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs County grant application for ODVA funds. John Latimer, Barb Young. Barb, good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair, if I might start this off, and then Barb will give you the the real information, the details of this action item. As you know, over the years, many years ago, we had an agreement with the Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs with Polk County and Marion County for the department to provide veteran service services for our two counties and using the money that would have come to the county to do that. In talking to some of my colleagues in other counties, they were beginning to get stretched very thin in terms of being able to fund what the veteran service officers without help from the state. And and the legislature adopted a bill to provide both lottery dollars and State General Fund to help the counties fund these services to our veterans. Marion, or Polk County, a year or two ago, adopted or developed a veteran service organization for that county. And now with this item, Marion County will do the same. We're new to this, so it won't start until January of next year. And we'll have to go through a lot of planning to make that happen. But with the resources that are coming from the legislature and the Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs, we'll begin to develop that program for our veterans. We will be doing an RFP to see if there are folks out there, nonprofits or profit folks, who want to provide these services. And we'll move forward with that as soon as we can with the idea that we'll begin using the funds for half a year, starting in January of seventeen or eighteen, and then we'll do a budget for a full year, starting next July. So Barb, you want to give them some details?
I'll just fill in a few of the details for John. For the record, Barb Young, Government Relations Manager for Marion County. I wanted to just talk a little more about the actual funding component for the grants coming from the Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs. There has been a general fund allocation from the state for several years to fund these programs. And as you all know, that in last fall, ballot measure ninety-six passed, and with that became an additional allocation to come with that general fund allotment of money. So basically, that's an additional one-point-five percent of net revenues from the lottery to come. That dollar amount will flex be, flex fluctuate a little bit in the future, but but that is a nice, solid amount of money to come help fund the programs. What the Department of Veterans Affairs is doing is combining the general fund and the lottery dollars into one pot, and then they have two distribution formulas for distributing those dollars. For Marion County, well, for starters, there will be a base funding formula for all counties. That's fifty-five percent of this total fund. And then there's an allocation based on veteran population for the other forty-five percent of that fund. So under both of those formulas combined, Marion County could receive two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand, sixty-five dollars to help fund our program. So we've built a draft budget based on that total dollar amount with carryover funds. And in your packet, I have done a corrected version of the actual application. I had not added the carryover funds into that, so I'm trying to make sure the expenditures and revenues balance. So I've given Gordine copies of that corrected application form for you. But we'll get that taken care of today. Again, as John referenced, the request for proposal, we plan to have that distributed by the end of September and work through the creation of our program and launch things, as he said, in January of two thousand and eighteen. And once we nail down what that program is, we can specify this budget. But we do need to get the application and a draft budget submitted to the Department of Veterans Affairs by September eighth. So open for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Questions?
No questions, I have comments when it's time.
Why don't you go ahead?
Oh, okay. So this has been an interesting discussion because when I joined the board back in two thousand and three, Polk County and Marion County were firmly in the camp that the state did our veteran services for us, and we liked that. I remember Ron Dodge saying, this is the way it is, and we like it. And I can't remember how many staff they had back in two thousand and three, but it was a whole lot more than they have right now doing the business for Marion County. And as we heard, Polk County has actually established their own veteran services officer. I believe that was last year that they did that. So that leaves Marion County as the only county where the state is providing veteran services with a limited number of staff. So at the Association of Oregon Counties, we have a veterans committee. We hear about veterans issues. Thirty, now five other counties have veteran services officers. I sit on the Health and Human Services Steering Committee, and veterans' issues are reported to that committee have been for all the years that I've been a commissioner. One of the things that they talk about is doing outreach to the veterans and making sure that the veterans are getting all of the benefits that they deserve. So in Marion County, and I was looking at the latest report that was sent out from Andy Smith a few weeks ago. This is for fiscal year fifteen. It says sixteen on one part and fifteen on the other, so anyway, the most recent report. So in Marion County, we have a hundred and sixty-nine and a half million about dollars that come into Marion County to veterans. And it lists that we have about twenty-four thousand veterans. Does that sound right in Marion County? Twenty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-eight. And so that's, and as I've been looking at these charts over the years, the proportions are pretty similar. So I look at Lane County, they have about five thousand more veterans than we do, twenty-nine thousand. But they bring in a hundred thousand dollars more in veterans' benefits, two-sixty-nine, two-fifteen million, hundred million dollars more. Sorry, a hundred thousand because these are in millions. And then Jackson County has twenty thousand veterans, and they bring in two-hundred-and-eighteen million dollars in benefits for veterans. So the argument that I've heard at the state level is that having these veteran services officers at the county level, it isn't just having a couple of staff people that are in an office waiting for people to come when they when they happen to think about it or referred by someone else, but they actually do the outreach that you need to track down the veterans and make sure that they are aware that they are eligible for veterans' benefits at the federal level. And then those dollars come into our community, and the veterans are part of our economy. And everybody wins when we have that. Veterans are better served, and the county economy is better served as well. So, this is going to be a new experience for us, and we're going to have to figure out a request for proposals process. There are a number of counties where the county actually provides the veteran services officers, I think that, as county employees. I think Marion County's approach, at least initially, we're going to try this, is that we're going to contract out with a nonprofit to do that. I think we believe that we can stretch our dollars better by doing that. One of the things that we've learned in the conversations that we've had is that there are a number of employees working in Marion County on veterans' issues now. Community Action Agency thinks that they have nine people working at their Archers Program on veteran services. That's pretty incredible. And then we've heard also in the conversations from veteran services organizations across the county that have people that oftentimes work as volunteers that are helping veterans do these things. So, we're not looking at duplicating the efforts that are going on, and there's some great efforts that are going on, but actually augmenting the services that the state has been providing for all of these years. The last thing I would say is that it has been very clear to me in the conversations with the state. Cameron Smith has come over to our meetings, and Mitch Sparks, that they are not interested in providing this service anymore. I'll just say that very plainly. Their mission is to convert the positions that they have to have specialties and other things. And I do want to say in their defense that there's been a lot of activity at the legislature around veterans the last number of sessions, and a number of new programs that have been done around having veteran services outreach at community colleges. And I can't remember all of the other things, but there were several bills that were passed, even in this last legislative session, that will allow them. I think housing was another area that they talked about, to make sure that veterans are housed. So, they want to actually have specialists at the state level that then can research and provide technical assistance to all of the counties, to be able to understand how these very specific areas work. So, I'm supportive of this. I recognize that it will become, there is an expectation over time that the county will match, at some level, funding with County General Fund. So, this is going to be an expense to the county that we haven't borne in the last number of years. But I believe that it's worth it to us to do this, not only because I think the state has said that they're not going to do it, and so our choices are limited in that, but we really owe it to our veterans to give them the best service that they can receive. And I think there will be a lot of benefits to this that we have no idea right now what that will be like, just because of our participation in this program, that we've been kind of disconnected from the whole veterans' area because we have delegated that to the state. And this will bring us in in a way, I think, that will connect us with health services, with housing services, with other things that the county has provided that we really haven't done much with over the past years that I've been with the board. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Are there anything else?
The only thing I would say, Mr. Chair, is that we definitely need to support our veterans who have served on, you know, given all and served on our behalf. So, yeah, it's probably unfortunate the way this has come about, but it's fortunate that we still have an opportunity to serve them and give them the things that they need, so.
All right.
You want to make any comments, please?
After the motion, maybe.
All right. So, Mr. Chair, I would move that the board approve the Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs County grant application for ODVA funds, as presented.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's moved and seconded to approve the grant request. Any further discussion?
Well, since I spoke really plainly about Department of Veterans Affairs earlier, too, I also want to point out that they have been more than helpful in terms of coming over and they're offering us assistance in moving this forward, copies of our FPs that other counties have done, and have really said that they're not just going to dump this on us. They're going to make sure that the transition is really smooth. They're keeping their officers in place at the state level, and then they're going to try to stand us up over that six-month period, and it will be a transition period. So, I don't want to leave the impression that they're just staying here. But I think they are very interested in converting the positions that they have to do other things, and having all 36 counties have this. Don't want to be misunderstood.
All right, I'll start out by saying I'll support this. It's correct that we put in our grant application. But then I have a whole number of problems with it, have from the beginning. You went through the history. We had this discussion a year ago. I thought we had the correct answer then. Already got to slow down. First of all, I am quite a student of history. I don't want to get crosswise. Absolutely respect the sacrifices our veterans have made and want to support them. But here's where I get angry. This is just another transfer of state obligation to local, and try to tell us how happy we'll be with it. Something the public doesn't know, they've been taking the money that was supposed to come to Marion County veterans and putting it in the state pool, and then sending it around the state. It's good for Oregon veterans, but it certainly doesn't address Marion County. Then come to us and say, "Well, we can't afford to do it anymore." They want to simply be an administrative organization, be like our sheriff department, say, "We're not going to go out on calls anymore. Don't call us. We'll just be administrative. We'll search grants. Our budget will be real good, and we'll be real happy, but we're not going to provide service to people." The decision to make was years ago to have Polk County and Marion County, there was no need to duplicate services, office right downtown, and they want to just now wash their hands of it. And I'm just not buying it. So, I will support this. I will support giving every bit of money that comes from the state to veteran services. But when you talk general fund, expanding, taking that burden off them and put it on, then there's decisions we have to make, which are limited discretionary money. As you know, most of it comes from the sheriff. I'm not going to be taking dollars from there. We have to look at the other things we have. Maybe it's my mosquito program. Maybe it's transition housing. But to say yes to this means giving up things that are also important to Marion County citizens and lets a state agency slough it off to somebody else. And I find it quite offensive. So, with that, done. Any other discussion? Now, call a question? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All right, thank you all.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right, the next items under Business Services. Will you consider ratification of Marion County Law Enforcement Association Collective Bargaining Agreement? Sheriff Jason Myers, Under Sheriff Troy Clausen, and Jason Boz Boss. You better correct me. Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Chair, commissioners. For the record, my name is Jason Myers, Marion County Sheriff. We're here today bringing forward a tentative agreement between the county and the Marion County Law Enforcement Association. Bargaining for this unit began on December 5th, 2016, and has been ongoing over the past year and a half, and ended last Sunday with a ratification of a tentative agreement with the Marion County Law Enforcement Association. Our team, the management team, was led by HR Colleen Coons Chafin. She's not able to be here today. Jason Boz was a team member, and will be, in a few minutes, highlighting some of the specifics of the tentative agreement. Our sheriff's office team was led by Under Sheriff Troy Clausen, and he'll be co-presenting with Jason. I just want to let you know that I fully support this. There's been a lot of hard work that's been put into this contract agreement. I believe it's fair to our employees. It's fair to our management rights. And I just want to recognize the hard work of both the management team or teams, as well as the Marion County Law Enforcement Association and our president, Jeremy Schwab. It's really a lot of thoughtfulness that went into this contract, and some new provisions that provide some options for our employees that are involved in situations. We'll talk about that in a minute. So, my support is here, and I'll turn it over to Troy and to Jason to talk about specifics.
Good morning, commissioners. Jason Boss, Senior HR Analyst for Marion County. It's my pleasure today to provide a summary of the collaboration between Marion County and the Marion County Law Enforcement Association in regards to the tentative agreement. I understand that you have a redline version of this, so what I'll do is I'll walk through the summary. If you do have any questions or comments, please feel free to stop me at any time, and Troy and I will try to provide any information that you would like. So, I would like to start out with the summary of the list of changes. So, the first one is just in the table of contents in regards to Article 11. The title's now Protected Leave. In Article 8, under Holidays, Section 2, Personal Holiday, page 7, the board recognizes the need to hire and retain and recruit staff. The change in this one is the board brought forward an amendment to no longer have a six-month waiting period for new employees in regards to their personal holiday. This has actually increased from one personal holiday up to two personal holidays as well. Under Section 3, the gratitude that's provided by the Board of Commissioners in the form of the Board of, or in the form of the Commissioners Day has been memorialized with language around the process in regards to that day. And I greatly appreciate the effort and the gratitude that the board provides the employees this opportunity, and understand the importance of having this language. Under Article 9, Vacation, Section 1, Vacation Accumulation. Section 1 speaks to the accumulation of vacation leave. Again, the board recognizes the value of their employees and their ability to better recruit and retain staff. And in regards to that, there has been increases to accumulation of vacations. Also, there has been a new accrual step added so that employees will now have to no longer wait till the five-year mark before their accruals increase. The new step starts at the zero-to-three mark, which was currently under the zero-to-five mark, at 12 days. It has increased by one day to 13 days annually. Now, between the three- and five-year mark, which was currently at the 12-day mark, it has increased by a total of two days to 14 days annually. And then at the current accrual steps from the five-to-10-year mark, it was currently at 15, that has increased an additional day to 16 days annually. Under Section 4, Vacation Bidding, on page 9, the association will sign a date and time for members to bid vacation. Employees of the same date of hire and the same classification shall rotate vacation bidding orders for each bid. Article 10, Sick Leave, Section 5, Page 11. Three workdays of paid bereavement leave for each immediate family member is now provided to the employees. The remaining approved days, under the state and federal law, five days is still, they're still able to charge to any accumulated leave per occurrence with the Marion County Personnel Rules. Under Section 7, Page 11 through 12, this speaks to, under the discretion of the employee supervisor, if earned sick leave has been exhausted, the employee may also use their vacation leave. Under Article 11, Protected Leave, as mentioned earlier with the title change, this article just clarifies the current practice and aligns language with state and federal law. Article 12, Other Leaves, Section 5, Under Temporary Interruption of Employment, page 14. When employment is temporarily interrupted, accrued leaves shall be charged as follows, and just goes through the list of vacation leave, personal holidays, compensation, credit leave, compensatory time, or leave without pay at employee's option. Article 13, Under Health and Welfare and Retirement Benefits, Section 1, Medical and Dental Insurances, page 15. The provider has changed, so we have changed the language from Moda to Regent's Blue Cross Blue Shields. And just some cleanup language under Section 5, Under Retirement. Continuing with Section 7, under that previous article, MCLEA Health Insurance Study Committee, page 16. We have distinguished the name between the countywide HIST committee versus the MCLEA HIST committee. They do have a different plan design, and it is a little different, so they have their own HIST committee in regards to their health insurance study committee. Under Article 14, Under Wage Adjustments, page 16 through 17, this is a proposed two-year contract. Within the first year, the COLA increase has been proposed at 2%. And for the second year of the contract, the COLA increase has been proposed at 2.5%. Under that same Article 14, former Section 3 has now moved to page 17, under Section, to Article 15. There's a new Section 3 in regards to longevity on page 17. Increases percentage of longevity in steps. So, the longevity steps, longevity one is at 10 years, longevity two is at 15, longevity three is at 20 years. With each longevity step, the increases have gone up from 1.75% for the first L1 to 2.75%. For L2, it's gone from 3% to 4%. And for longevity step three, it's gone from 5% to 6.5%. Under Article 15, Under Pay Administration, page 17 through 20, there's some cleanup language there. Section 9, in regards to Corrections Nurses Incentive Pay. Nurses incentive pay at 2.5% at the completion of county trial service. Rather than the four-year mark, an additional 3% incentive pay starts at the fourth year of service, rather than the sixth year. Under Section 11, Under Detective Pay, there's a 5% differential that will be paid while serving in the capacity of a detective. Under Section 12, Nurse Shift Differential, page 20. Shift differential of $1.60 per hour. Those are the hours worked between 6:00 PM and 11:59 PM, and a shift differential of $2.25 for hours worked between 12:00 AM and 5:59 AM. Under Section 13, Education Incentive Pay, we've moved this language to Article 14, and just cleaned up the longevity pay reference. Article 18, On Call, Section 8, page 23 through 24. We've incorporated the compensatory time letter of agreement, accrual period of January 1 through December 31st each calendar year, and that's limited at 48 hours. Under Article 24, Transporting Prisoners, Section 1, page 24, it now references the Marion County Personnel Rules. Under Article 28, Discipline and Discharge, Section 5, Internal Affairs Complaint Investigations, page 28. The county one will follow the Professional Standards Manual that is set forth by Marion County Sheriff's Office. And under Article 30, General Provisions, Section 4, page 32, this has moved to section, this section has moved to Article 33 now. And then under Article 33, Association Representatives, page 33, there is a new section from Article 30, is what I just previously mentioned. Under Article 38, Training, page 36. Section 8, 20 out of 40 hours of training provided to DP SST certified personnel shall qualify to advancement towards DP SST certification. Section B1, Reclarification, Under Supervisor, shall schedule training adjustment days on the employee's first or last day of his or her work week, unless mutually agreed upon otherwise. And under Article 44, Life of Agreement Termination, like I mentioned before, this is proposed as a two-year agreement, ending on June 30th of 2019. It also mentioned that all letters of agreement must be signed by the CEO, department head, HR, or designee, and the designated representative of the association. Under Article 46, which is the definitions, there's just some Under Article 46, which is the definitions, there's just some housekeeping that took place in that article. And then under the letters of agreements that are in the proposed tentative agreement, all letters of agreement, with the exception of the Facility Security Aid 2 Vacation Bidding, the Wage Adjustment and Classification Review, and Sheriff's Office Workers Compensation Wage Continuation are all renewals. At this time, I'd like to open it up to any comments or questions that maybe we can answer.
All right. Thank you, Arthur.
Not really any questions, just want to say thank you. I know this was
A lot of work.
A lot of work to go through. Every time we talk about memorializing the Commissioners' Day, I just want to make sure people still send me those little thank you emails, you know, we get to send out the letter. It doesn't get taken for granted, so I've been assured that will be the case.
I hate to bring this up out of how big this document is and the important things, but one just kind of couldn't quite figure it out, so you can explain it. It's under Training 38, Article 38A. Says you have to have 40 hours, but 20 hours shall qualify for advancement towards certification. Why shouldn't all of it apply?
Well, there's specific criteria that the Police Academy has for certification levels, and so we're just ensuring that we will cover that. It's just an assurance that we will get that level of training for the folks, which we intend to do, but they want that identified in the CBA.
So the other 20 hours might be related
It'll be all relevant.
But not
It's relevant training, but it's not necessarily required for certification.
Okay, I get it. Thank you. Anything else?
Just thank you for all the work that both sides have put into this, I know.
All right.
I guess it is my motion, isn't it? Mr. Chair, I'll move that we ratify the, ratify the Marion County Law Enforcement Association, MCLE, Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Second to motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the just gone through Marion County Law Enforcement Collective Bargaining Agreement. Any further discussion? I hear none, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, and for another couple of years.
Thank you.
Next item, under District Attorney's Office, we consider approval of a contract in the amount of $1,600,000. With Journal Technologies for a Case Management Software System to support the District Attorney's Office contract includes nine years of licenses, maintenance, and support. Good morning. Vanessa. You're gonna have to introduce yourself. You're not on the list, and I'm forgetting a name already, and shouldn't.
Scott Emery.
Scott, excuse me.
Good morning, Commissioners. As soon as we can get our slide here.
So I'll introduce myself. Scott's dealing with the technology. My name is Vanessa Coggins. I have the privilege of being the Administrative Manager for the District Attorney's Office. Close to you. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. I feel like I'm really loud. So typically, the District Attorney, Walt Beglow, would make a presentation such as this, but he is on a well-deserved vacation, and rather than delay the presentation of this to the Board, he's asked me to answer any questions that you may have for this presentation.
And good morning. I am Scott Emery, the new Information Technology Director for Marion County, and I'm here to support and be a partner with the District Attorney's Office. And we want to give an overview and, of course, solicit support for a new replacement system of the District Attorney's Office Case Management System. Right now, we have about 105 individuals as a staff member of the District Attorney that interacts with the current system, about 150 users that are external. This would be like the Sheriff Department and whatnot. About 10,000 cases are processed in 2016, leading to about 100 million documents. So this system is pretty big and pretty critical for the agency. And with that in mind, there is a need to actually, not only to bring forward and modernize, but also to help safeguard that information. The project itself is targeted at actually bringing in new technology that is actually tried and true in the industry, so we're reducing the risk to make sure that we're not out there prospecting on any kind of platform that would actually be inherently risky to the county. We are also making sure that we're improving productivity for the staff, at the same time improving the safeguard around the information that we hold. It's very sensitive information, as you can well imagine, and we want to also protect against cybersecurity, as well as making sure that those individuals who interact with the system only have access to the information they're supposed to. That, we'll handle for the problem opportunity here.
So the District Attorney's Office has been looking at a case management system, new case management system for several years. What we wanted in a product was something that worked better than the legacy system that we have now. It just does not provide the necessary support or workflow processes that the DA's office needs.
The forecast up here is in around what we call year zero, the initial investment. I know we started off talking about 1 point million, or 1, 1, 1.6 million, thank you. But the year zero cost, initial first year worth of investment of actually implementing, actually converting data and making sure we're up and running, is $750,000. As you can see here, that the preponderance is in fact working with the vendor to help us do implementation, and again, everything associated with hardware and software. This is really the notion of saying, look, we need to go to the industry, we need to pull in what is current best-in-breed, bring those individuals that are experts in actually deploying the system for us as a partner. This is the timeline. It's a 12-month effort that's actually broken down into waves of functionality. This is key. Rather than waiting to the end to find out that we have a system that won't meet the organization's need, we want to be able to deploy in individual pieces. As you can see, it's going to stair-step over time of that 12-month period, and all throughout those incremental periods, we are, of course, making sure that the staff is trained and up to speed on the system before we actually do a turnover. Again, that will help reduce any kind of kinks or confusions, and also help us flush out any kind of potential defects that might be in the workflow early on. Risk and Assumptions. Well, not every work effort that we do is free of risk, and so we recognize that. So we worked with the team to identify some of those prevailing areas that we need to be concerned about, track, and make sure that we keep an eye on, as well as have appropriate mitigations, too. We have a large set of data, as I mentioned, just in 2016 alone, you know, 100 million records. Now, you actually start to replicate that back in years. That's a very significant amount of data that we have to move from point A to point B into the new system, and we're going to leverage the vendor's experience to help us mitigate. You can see, of course, the impact could be severe should, in fact, the event happen, but we also believe that we have a pretty good ballpark on what potential cost impact that may be. We do, in fact, have contingency in this effort to cover those kind of gaps. Two other areas is around, one is around the interfaces. We have no fewer than 10 different connection points to other departments and agencies, so it's a lot of information flowing to and flow for which the current system doesn't necessarily handle very well, so this will be a pretty significant improvement for us. But they will be prioritized with respect to implementation and risk. Finally, something that is unique to Marion County is victim notifications. This is about actually generating email notifications to the systems. It's a way of, it's, it's a customer service component that is current in the present system. It's not normally part of the out-of-the-box experience from many of these platforms, but it does actually serve the citizens of the county. So it's, because it is new to this platform that we're looking at moving forward with, we will contain the scope to the existing system to make sure we mimic the behavior and do nothing more. You know, again, just we want base functionality that we currently have. There's some assumptions here, maybe not as important, but we help the vendor gauge the infrastructure we're going to need from an IT side. And, of course, we're all a little concerned about that storage side. Again, as we do the processes every day throughout the county, we generate more and more information that we have to be good stewards towards, so we'll be watching it closely to make sure that it's not growing exponentially, that we'll keep our costs down. And finally, here's kind of a high-level view of the team and the organizational structure that tells us who's control, who's accountable. These roles are further defined, and this is kind of the outline. Again, I'll turn it over to Vanessa, kind of walk us through it.
So obviously, the sponsor of this is Walt Beglow. He's tasked me with being the lead person to bring all the people to the table in our different divisions that will be using this product. Gary Christopherson is the actual project manager, as well as we will have a project manager from Journal Technologies. This does require quite a bit of IT-dedicated staff time. The technical lead and business analyst is Dan Myrick. As you can imagine, from implementing different systems with the county, there will be many workflows that we go through and business rules that we'll define during the course of the implementation of this project.
And now we'd like to open up any questions you may have.
Well, thank you for the presentation. So I've got a number of questions. I've heard a little bit about this in the background as we've been moving forward, but just to make sure everybody's clear, those listening, too. So what exactly is the scope of this, of the data that's going to go into the system? Is it, is it DA's office wide? Does it exclude victim services and child support? Is it mostly cases that the trial teams do? Can you kind of describe that?
Yes. So it would contain all of the information in our Adult Prosecution Division, so any cases that we prosecute as adults, as well as any cases we prosecute as juveniles, including dependency cases. It would also encompass the Victim Assistance Division. The only department it will not impact is our Support Enforcement Division, but it will be the main core computer system for the District Attorney's Office.
Okay. And then, I saw you went through an RFP process, as obviously you would. So in the experience of this particular vendor, are they, are there other DA's offices in Oregon that use them, in the West Coast? Kind of talk about what the experience of the vendor is with regards to the types of data that you're interested in managing through the system.
So there are three current counties in the state of Oregon that is, that is using this company's software. Deschutes County over in Bend, Coos County in Coos Bay, and then also Lynn County was the first DA's office in the state to bring on Journal Technologies. So as far as the data that we hope to keep, as you know, there is more and more data that is coming to the District Attorney's Office. There's more and more data that comes from the Sheriff's Office. From, you know, back when I started, we worried about VHS tapes and little microcassettes, and we've gone to CDs, Blu-rays, external hard drives. We've gone to surveillance videos. We've gone to body cameras and also in-dash cameras. So what we're hoping for is a robust system that would allow us to be able to keep all of that in one place, so that a DA could then look at that and be able to evaluate the case.
And I remember sitting down with Walt when he was first a district attorney, and he was giving me all of this information. You know, the, our DA's office prosecutes more cases for the state than any other county, and so on and so forth, and I'm saying, so can I see the data around this? He's like, oh, well, you know, we don't have a very good data system, so it's really hard for us to pull data. So I know over the years, there's been some reports that come out, the children's, I'm trying to remember, the drug team, that they do a quarterly report, and I've always wondered whether or not those are done more with spreadsheets and, you know, what workarounds than with the system actually providing that data. So my, with that context, my question is, will this system allow an easier way for the office, the DA's office, to actually pull answers to questions like that? So what are, what proportions of cases are we seeing that have this particular charge, or how are we, what are the outcomes of the cases? What are the verdicts or whatever of the cases in this particular aspect? So kind of explain what the potential of the system is in terms of us being able to collect and analyze data around sort of more outcome levels.
Thanks for bringing that up, Commissioner Carlson. Yes, so right now, in order to get data from our legacy system, it's very time-consuming, and there is much manual effort involved. And so if we receive, or if we're asked questions from the Board's Office, in order to compile that information, most of the time it is really me looking up those cases and then providing the information in Excel spreadsheet. One of the components that I was looking for in a new case management system was the ability to be able to capture data that was real-time, that was relevant, that could then be provided in any scenario that Walt would need, or that the Board's Office may need, or are partners in order to make determinations, because the need for data is what drives the decisions that we make. And so that was one of the criteria in this product, fulfills that requirement.
Excellent. And then the last question I have, and this might be more of a Scott question than a Vanessa question. So you mentioned that there are, you have the PERT chart with all of the different tasks that are going to go on, and you talked about the cost and contingency. So we, we know that IT projects have maybe 50/50 chance of being successful in the world or something like, anyway, it's, it's a, we've, we've seen, I guess, those, the systems that everybody's hoping are going to go well, and then they don't. And so are there, and then we end up with situations where a local government or state government is suing a particular company because they didn't deliver, and we're working to try to get our money back and all of that. So how in this contract are we going to make sure that if we reach a particular, particular benchmark and it hasn't been accomplished, that we're going to hold them accountable? Are there, are there timeframes in there where things have to be done? Are there penalties in there if things don't get accomplished by certain times? How is it structured so to maximize our accountability and our ability to work with this company and make sure we have a successful product?
Great, and that is a very good question. I did get a chance to actually do a full review of the contract itself, and it's pretty darn sound, having, again, reviewed many contracts. The, what I will indicate to you is there's actually two folds to this. One is our ability to manage our understanding of what we want, and, of course, the ability for our third-party vendor to perform. So the contract is structured for progress payments, again, in, over those individual incremental. In other words, you take a bigger problem, break it into small pieces, and make sure that you're only paying through those progress payments. That's one aspect. The burden on us is to make sure that we stay to our basic set of requirements, our scope, and keep it in check. Usually, what ends up driving those bad behaviors or those failed projects is a partnership around how we manage understanding of what we want at the end. As soon as we start to say, wow, we, we see some records here, we didn't take it into account, and we tried to put the burden on the vendor, the time starts slipping, this cost starts getting out of control, and then that whole progress payment schedule starts to kind of have a challenge. So a part of it is a burden on the county to make sure that we're maintaining through our project management process to keep us in check. The other part is to make sure that we're keeping our partner in check in delivering. Keep it simple, keep it very vanilla, keep the scope in check is really the key to making sure we have a successful outcome.
But you're confident within the contract that we've structured that all of those things are in place?
Yeah, I am. I will tell you that there are some improvements coming in brand-new, and seeing what I would call ongoing operational challenges that may have been missed. Typically, when we go to look at doing a system replacement for any of the departments, we're really concerned about that year zero cost, and we may not be looking at that longer-term cost. So we're going to make sure that we improve that. We still have an opportunity in this project to do that, so I don't see us getting off track. But there's those things around, making sure that we have solid disaster recovery, make sure we have good backup. They may, they sound very common, but we forget those things when we contract out. So again, that's a burden on us to make sure that we're doing justice to the citizen and making sure we're having a good outcome.
Thank you. And one of the comments that I would like to make regarding this contract and this particular product is while there may be minimal payments along the way, until we implement, until we've gone through all of the workflow, the data migration and implement, the company will not invoice us until the end of the product. And so that was another one of our considerations that technically, they're not taking all of the risk, but they're taking a majority of the risk by doing that.
Great. Thank you.
All right. John?
Mr. Chair, Members, I have a couple of questions. One is, well, first of all, I'd like to thank Gary Christopherson and his folks and Vanessa. They worked very hard. They worked very hard on getting this company to agree to what we wanted in the contract. It took a long time to get that agreement. About a year, wasn't it? And Gary worked very hard on it, as did Vanessa, so I really want to thank them for doing that. I do have one question, though, and that's data migration. Many of these large projects fail because they're, we don't make an agreement with the vendor about data migration. It tends to be a very huge part of any of these projects. Can you explain about data migration and how we're going to do that? Because right now, the DA has a lot of data in an old system. How are we going to, and that has to be kept in the new system. So how are we going to do that?
Yeah, absolutely. Again, very good point. Again, that's another sore point if you look at the history of project implementations. We have data, and to some degree, again, the burden's back on the county. If we don't maintain our data in clean order, it makes it very hard for a vendor to migrate it. For example, if you shift it from system to system over those years, chances are there's some inconsistency in the data. The vendor can only help us so much with that. I'm unfamiliar with this particular data set, but to me, that would be the most significant risk, is how clean our data is. The actual action of transitioning data from one system to the next is a pretty straightforward, a consistent process, but the validation that the data coming across is accurate goes back to us. So it's a, again, it's a partnership. The vendors are usually pretty good. If we find those exceptions, to help us through that. But there's a fair amount of burden on us since we created the records to begin with. I know that may not be the answer you want to hear, but we do have that accountability.
Mr. Chair, if I might. Some of us remember a major project we had a few years ago where nobody thought about data migration, and we spent a lot of time arguing with the vendor and ourselves, and it didn't work. The data migration was an absolute disaster. And so that always worries me. I know, having worked with large changes in major data systems, data migration can be the biggest part of the project. And so I worry about that. So I hope you hear me.
Yeah, well, I will tell you, if you actually went back and looked at the schedule, you'll see that that is one of the longest lead items. So that is what we call the critical path, is that data migration.
And I'd like to comment, John, that in 2003, when we went to the existing system that the DA's office used, Gary Christopherson and I worked on the data migration from that AS400 mainframe to the system that we have. So we know a lot of the pitfalls, and we know the experience that is needed and the historical knowledge that is needed in order to identify migration paths. And I think that because I've been with the DA's office so long, that's one of the reasons why I'll be a major player in the data migration, because I was here in the beginning and I know where the information goes. So it was, it was well thought out.
All right.
Chair, I have one other question. We have a new electronic court system. It has many, many, many problems with it because of the contract that the courts signed with the vendor, was not a good contract. How do you vision the interaction between this system and the court electronic system? I know there are some hitches in it now, and we're going to have to make some, we're going to have to do some work to be able to interact with it. Have you thought about that?
Absolutely. I'm not sure how the, how large the contract was between the state and ECourt, but one of the reasons why our contract is so large is because we wanted to try to foresee any difficulty that we could have. And of course, ECourt is a big deal in the DA's office. I am convinced that the system that we are going to will be easily configurable to be able to push information to the state of Oregon's Odyssey product. What we don't know yet is how that Odyssey product is going to be able to take that information. And that's something we don't have control over. We identified in the contract that there are some interfaces that are under the control of third parties, and so we are looking forward to that. I hope that that comes to pass, but a lot of that is up to Tyler Technologies, frankly.
Anything else?
Well, technology.
Yep, we're not going to get away from there.
Love it and hate it.
Ready for motion, or you have?
Please.
What, is Kevin going to say anything?
Go ahead and make the motion.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, I would move that the board approve the contract with Journal Technologies, Inc., in the amount of $1.6 million for a case management software system to support the district attorney's office.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve the contract with Journal Technologies, Inc., for the district attorney's office. Any further discussion?
I was just going to make a comment that, you know, for somebody who may be watching, $1.6 million, it's amortized over nine years, according to this, and it's about $177,000 a year amortized. Still a lot of money.
Still a lot of money, yes.
Listen, we break it down by the day?
And I, in spite of Vanessa's optimism, I did hear some it might not work in this conversation, but I hope it does. But I feel that I have, we have the team that can get through it. Anything else? All right, let's call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Have fun.
Thank you for the time and consideration.
Keep us informed, if you would.
All right, our next item is under Health. Consider approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority in the amount of $358,750 for health promotion and chronic disease prevention through June 30th, 2019. Pam is, oh, Pam is still here. Carrie, go ahead.
I'm very patient.
Introduce yourselves.
Good morning, I'm Carrie Muller. I'm the administrator for the Health Department. With me?
Pam Hutchinson with Marion County Public Health.
So for many years, the Health Department has had a contract with OHA to provide these SAP block grant services. So those are substance abuse prevention and treatment services. It's a federal block grant that passes through us to the state, from the state. What's new this year is historically, those services have been contracted through our Behavioral Health Services, and this, in this biennium, they moved to the Public Health Division. So I just wanted to recognize the critical importance of prevention services. And when we think about prevention services in our community, we think about them in sort of three ways: primary prevention, secondary prevention, and tertiary prevention. These services are for primary prevention, and that's with the goal and the hope of preventing disease and specifically things around substance abuse, tobacco, alcohol, misuse. So Pam's going to talk a little bit with us today about sort of what we're doing in our Public Health Department with these services.
Thank you, Commissioners. I wanted to point out, on the agenda, it mentions for the health promotion and chronic disease prevention, and then if you look at your packet, it mentions what Carrie was talking about, the substance abuse prevention. And that's just a reflection of the fact that they've moved the funds from Behavioral Health at the state level under the Chronic Disease Prevention Program at the, on public health side of the OH, Oregon Health Authority. So we're in transition, I guess you could say, on the terminology. So our prevention team uses this money and has been using this money primarily in three ways. One is we help provide mini-grants and funding to community partners. For example, just this last class that graduated, there were 10 different high schools in Marion County that received a mini-grant from us to have, help them have alcohol and drug-free graduation parties. We fund the Strengthening Families, which is a parenting program for youth ages 10 to 14, helps build communications and parenting skills, but it's attended by both the parents and the youth, and we fund partners around the county. We've really worked hard to build capacity in the county by helping to ensure that partners, in particular, our Together groups that are focused on alcohol and drug prevention, are to have people that are trained to provide these classes, and then they do it out in the community so that we don't have to do it ourselves, because we have a small staff. We have a little more than one FTE or one full-time equivalent person on this funding. Another thing that our staff do is collaborate in the community with partners. For example, we participated in the recent event at Volcano Stadium, the Health of Communities event. We coordinate with community partners on a youth development event every summer called ILEAD. And what it does is brings high schoolers together to develop leadership skills and kind of good citizenship skills. So it's a very positive way that we work with community partners. We also do a newsletter to keep community partners abreast of what's going on in prevention at Marion County Health Department and in the community. And then, lastly, we provide technical assistance to community partners, particularly the Together groups or other groups that are working on initiatives to help impact alcohol and drug use in their communities. This coming year, we're planning an assessment. You know, everything needs to be database, and so our prevention program is going to be doing an assessment specifically looking at alcohol use across the age continuum, and then they'll be using that data to help inform a future plan for our activities. Any questions?
I do have a question. So, thank you. So do we use any of these funds to actually support the staff that does the prevention work?
Yes, we have a little more, like, one and a portion.
And then with the balance of what we do, these mini-grants and the other things?
Yes, it's not a lot of funding.
And then the other question I had is, so does the state still fund any of these Together projects? How many of them are left? When I started doing this work in the 90s, there was a real strong one in Silverton, Woodburn Together, and I'm thinking there might have been one in the canyon.
There's...
Or Jefferson Together, there was Jefferson.
Jefferson Together, and then there's Friends of the Family in the state area. And there was one in Salem, but that one dissolved.
So do they, do these Together groups, when you're mentioning the Together groups, do they still get money from the state, or are they just working as volunteer organizations with no resource, or how's that going?
They do anything they can to find funding. The state has not really been actively funding. They rely partly on us. Some are more active than others. Some groups have had a hard time maintaining kind of the momentum. You know, it, it's built on the model Communities That Care, I believe is what it was called, and that really relies on bringing a cross-section of your community together, and it works better in smaller communities, and that's why I think the Salem one eventually, it wasn't a good fit anymore. But there's still these groups working...
So we still have the four groups in Marion County?
Yes.
And then, I don't want to get off on a bunny trail, but are the service integration teams that are being discussed by hospitals, are they going to connect into prevention in any meaningful way, or do you think that they're just more involved in looking at resource sharing for people in need?
I think that our prevention program is more of a population-based, community-based systems kind of collaboration, and the sit teams or system integration teams are going to be really focused on the individual, like I have a family that needs X, and who can help them out. And so the Health Department will be at the table for those. We talked about whether it fit with prevention. I don't think that's really been decided, who will be our public health rep for the process. But we have a few programs that would benefit from that kind of work.
All my questions.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
If I might. I know that Salem Health is really working hard on population health and the hospitals, I guess it's something that's happening all over the country, but my concern about population health, and I hope you can help me understand this, is that it's so focused on the aggregates, I worry about whether we're going to be still providing services to individuals, because they, individuals need the help and the service. But popular, I've never been able to get the Oregon Health Authority, who will explain it to me, where the individual fits in population health. Can you help me understand that?
Well, I think it takes all approaches. I mean, you can't just do a population-level kind of approach. You have to have, you have to serve the individuals. But it's, for public health, I mean, I think you're alluding to modernization, which is moving towards more of a population focus. And so our role would be more working with, for example, the work that Ed and I are doing with the healthcare system to make sure that they're prepared to serve the individual by, you know, courting our supports that we'll provide and so on. So it integrates, but yes, we have to serve individuals, too.
Can I just say something about that, Mr. Chair? And I think, I think your comment, it takes, I mean, you can't do one or the other. That's absolutely right. But there are so many things that public health has done. I didn't really understand public health until, and this is before I became a county commissioner, but I went to a conference back in Chicago when I was a legislator, and I went to a public health workshop, and they started explaining the history of public health and just simply, I mean, the advances that we've made in water quality and foodborne illness and, you know, I mean, all kinds of things that we take for granted now in, and in third-world countries, that when you go there, you start realizing, and then you see garbage in the street, and you can't drink the water and so on, that the advances that we've made in public health that make us all a healthier society. But when you pull that forward and you think of the campaigns that have been done maybe over the last three decades or so, so driving under the influence, drunk driving, used to be just kind of a, you know, people, oh, well, shame on them, right? And now the laws have changed, our public perspective has changed, there's really zero tolerance for people that drive drunk anymore, and that didn't used to be the case. Smoke-free buildings and, I shouldn't admit this...
Seatbelt.
But I'm watching reruns of Columbo, this has been my latest thing that I do and watched last night. Every episode, people are smoking. I mean, he's got the cigar and, you know, we don't see that on our media as much anymore. And so the way that health types of things have been communicated, the nutrition and exercise and walking and biking, and, you know, I know you love bikes, but...
I like bikes.
Yeah, I know you do. But all of those things really have come out of a public health, population-based kind of movement. And certainly, we need treatment and services for people that have illnesses or that need to have specialized attention. But we can reach so many more people, and we know that if people were exercising more, eating a Mediterranean diet, and all the things that we're hearing, we would have a healthier society, we wouldn't need, we wouldn't have as many chronic diseases and so on. So I really do think that the prevention piece that we're doing, even though it is such a small amount of money, you divide that by two years, I mean, and the, the amount of emphasis, but it's just critical to what we do in our community. And we don't, we really do not acknowledge public health enough in our society. And in Oregon, we're, I can't remember what we are, 48th in the nation in terms of what we funded. So we have such a long ways to go, but it is such an important aspect of what we do. So that's my soapbox. Thank you.
The only other thing I'd add here is the importance of the integration with our primary care partners, you know, and other community health partners here. I think the enthusiasm and the energy around that work and sort of dividing and conquering, if you will, in terms of how we deploy our resources. I think we'll continue to do that work. We've been doing that for a while now here in our community, and I feel hopeful about that.
Mr. Motion?
Sure. Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority in the amount of $358,758 for the health promotion and chronic disease prevention through June 30th, 2019.
Okay, and I will second the motion, but I think it's just $750, not 758.
Fine. Did I say eight?
I heard eight.
I didn't, but fine, we have the number here, and I'll do it again, we will. Then the motion's made and seconded to approve the intergovernmental agreement in the amount of $358,750 for health promotion, chronic disease prevention. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just, I guess I should ask Pam this question. This is, this is some of the things that we're working on with Polk County in how we can cross jurisdiction. I mean, this was one of our top issues in that meeting we had last week, which we'll have another one tomorrow, I believe. So we can talk offline about how this contract may impact that in the long run, so that's all I wanted.
All right. Anything else? Are you in all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Chair, he's leaving. Rick Sherman's coming. The next item, still under Health. Consider approval of an order that increases the fees... an order that increases the fees for licensed facilities.
Good morning, Commissioners. What we're asking, what Marion County Environmental Health is asking is for the 5.25% increase over the next, for each year, for three years to keep our program operating to meet all the inspections and, and other things that we do with our licensed facilities in Marion We have the spreadsheet in front of all of you and all the changes that we had talked with the Commissioners, with you Commissioners about, we've instigated and we're ready to go with your approval.
I'd like to mention that, like Commissioner Carlson was pointing out, that this is one of the foundational public health activities that has really improved health across the, you know, last several decades and that these fees allow our sanitarians to go out to each site twice a year to do an inspection and provide technical assistance. And then if there's any issues in the in-between, like if we get a complaint or anything, they also go out for those. So it helps to fund the staff, the basic staffing to do this work, to keep the health and safety of the public.
All right, thank you. I'm going to interrupt here. We went over these, we looked at county comparisons, things seem in line. We talked about, but I'd like you to talk about notification to people and how they get word on this new, new fee and if it'll cause any difficulty. How, how are you getting the word out is really the question?
As soon as it gets approved, we're going to send out our news, our quarterly newsletters to our operators and all of our different programs. Also, it'll be on our website and we'll do some other information, systems, whatever we can do to get it out there.
Okay, and it's effective January 1st, so there's time there to make sure people are aware.
And we'll probably put out a press release with newspapers.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
I was just looking, I thought the one we talked about, and I can see it on here, is the late penalty for temporary restaurants, right?
Yeah, that's, the temporary restaurants, the late penalty is when you go over to the seven, 2017, 18, there's the $100 increase.
Well, it says it's $100 now in the chart, but that's not really true, right?
No.
Okay, so I just wanted to double check that, so, so that's, it's going for, what is it right now?
Right now, the license fee is.
No, the late penalty.
Oh, it's.
It's a lot less.
It was 25.
Yeah, right, okay. So that is a percentage increase above what we're doing right now, but that was at the behest of the Commissioners and.
Well, Mr. Chair, for me, I think that was an issue that we have a lot of good players in our community that do the right thing and then we have people who come from outside that ignore the rules and that's what that's targeted at, so we really appreciate the operators that are doing the right thing.
So we ready for motion on this? Okay, Mr. Chair, would move that the board approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority, oh, I'm in the wrong one, consider that the board approve an order increasing the fees for licensed facilities as presented.
I'll second.
I'd move, and seconded to approve the, an order for the fees that we've been discussing having to do with Health Department inspection, other services. Any further question or discussion? Hearing none, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Rick. Keep at it. We have one I want to talk to you about, a new category. I'll just say it now, we came up solid waste talking about and maybe we might like some, while you're there looking at restaurants, talk about their recycling program, but we'll mention it earlier. You'll say it has nothing to do with health. It could.
Should have something to do with health.
We'll talk about it. It seemed like a great opportunity. Thank you. Next item, we made a work for, wait for almost a whole time. We consider approval of intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation with a not-to-exceed value of $175,000 for ODOT maintenance of county signals, beacons, and other electrical installations through June 30th, 2022. Julia Eravich, good morning. Julia, still morning? Good.
It is still morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Julia Eravich with Marion County Public Works. I represent the Engineering Division. And Commissioners, this morning I have, for your consideration, a cooperative agreement for the maintenance of traffic signals, flashing beacons, illumination, and other electrical installations on our Marion County roadway system. This is a five-year agreement that would begin on July 1st of this year and it runs through June 30th of 2022. We have, this agreement includes four traffic signals and then there's 19 flashing beacon installations on our county road system. And the reason that this agreement is necessary is because Marion County Public Works does not have an electrical staff. We do not have signal techs on our staff, so we partner with ODOT Region 2 for the maintenance of our traffic signals and flashing beacons. And then they also help us with some traffic signal engineering services as needed, like signal timing and that sort of thing. So this agreement over the five-year life is $175,000. That's the maximum amount and that equates to about, or to a maximum amount of $35,000 a year. So now if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I think it's pretty clear.
Would you tell me the numbers and types of signals that they do for us? But we, I thought you said four signals. We certainly have more than four traffic signals for our county.
That's a, that's a good point, Commissioner. The majority of our traffic signals are actually located within the Salem urban growth boundary and those signals are maintained by the City of Salem under a separate agreement. We have 18 signals in the Salem urban area and then we have five beyond the Salem urban area, four in this agreement, and then there's one in the City of Silverton, which we have a separate agreement for the maintenance with the City of Silverton and ODOT.
I can figure, I'm thinking of Staton and Silverton, probably two right in a row in Staton, so that's a big part of it.
Three of the signals are in Staton. The fourth one is Airport and aren't way up north.
Really? I just would assume there's way more than that, but thanks for explaining it. Any other questions or comments?
So the 19 were beacons then, is that right? So 19 beacons and four signals?
That is correct.
All right, okay. I'm looking at the list in the contract, so.
Where do school speed zone.
Two, two of them are sets of school zone flashing beacons.
Okay.
And then we also have some solar-powered school zone flashing beacons in the Salem urban area that county forces are actually able to maintain.
We do those, okay. All right. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation not to exceed the value of $175,008, no, $175,000 for ODOT maintenance of county signals, beacons, and other electrical installations through June 30th, 2022.
I'll second the motion.
I'd move, seconded to approve the intergovernmental agreement with ODOT for $175,000 for maintenance of county signals. Any further discussion? John?
I just wanted to thank Julia for the work she does. She's of real credit too. Is our, one of our county employees that does such a wonderful job and I really appreciate the work she does. Thanks.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Your second.
I do too, but the question is this agreement. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. That motion passes. Truly, thank you, Julia.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We made Ed Flick wait the entire time, probably should have changed it. I know you've got a million things you want to worry about. You're here for a wildfire plan and we'll, we've been through this. I'm going to say for you, and you can repeat, that we spotted some things that needed to be changed and upgraded in, in the draft we looked at, but you want to go ahead and we'll deal with those discrepancies, for lack of a better word, in the future.
Yes, Commissioner, Ed Flick, County Emergency Manager, for the record. In the work session, we did identify some, some clerical things that we're going to address. We have actually updated the maps that had the acronyms, so those are already done. And in the interest of having board-adopted plans, particularly mindful of the fire, we thought it prudent to bring this forward for consideration of adoption at this time for both the Community Wildfire Protection Plan and the Marion County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I see you thinking, but just for the public's sake and then we not go too quickly through this, what will these plans do for Marion County and for the public and our emergency service? What are we trying to accomplish here?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the plans are non-regulatory plans that identify and catalog the threats and hazards that are, we, we need to consider. And so those are principally natural hazards, but they also include technological things like hazardous material incidents and dam failure. What these plans do is provide a document that was developed over the course of the last year and a half in conjunction with just a number of private partners, almost exhaustive coordination with, with both 11 different cities in the county as well as private partners. Sedcor was a key partner, as were utilities and other private parties. And they develop a list of things, both near, mid, and long-term initiatives that present policy options for, for this government and others to consider to, to proactively reduce hazards over time. And I'll cite the example of the Wildland Fire. One of the principal goals of the Community Wildfire Protection Plan is to work with fire districts and citizens to promote the clearing of defensible space around residents, also to develop plans for evacuation. On the hazard mitigation side, examples of mitigation actions include ways that we can alert the public for rising floodwaters or schools that may need to be seismically retrofitted. These are not all things that we, we can do within existing resources. Some of them are more reach objectives, but through the developing of the plan, we find a lot of things that are already going on in our community to reduce hazards and things that could be done to, to reduce our risk over time.
Thank you. Questions?
So we went through this in a work session and there is a lot in these plans and a lot of jurisdictions that are participating. And I think I made a suggestion and we talked about it, about having ongoing reports as we move forward. So it, today you got it added on at the last minute, you've got a, like a three-page thing here and it's not even on the web and, you know, the room's empty. So would it be possible for you to come back in the fall sometime maybe and bring a couple cities with and then they could go through their portion of it and we could really have a nice presentation like we did with the eclipse this morning and highlight maybe a couple areas of the plan and, and talk about what it means to people? I think that would just be a really good thing to do. So I, I appreciate the need to get this formalized and off to FEMA and all that kind of stuff, but I, I don't want us to say this is it, so.
Commissioner, I think that's a wonderful suggestion and we'll begin to work now with, with some jurisdictions and bring forward a, a good quality product that highlights some of the great work that can be done.
Great, thank you. So I think it's my turn to make a motion, right?
Here it is. There's two perhaps. Okay.
You're saying I need to make two motions?
Perhaps.
Can we do the two plans?
Do we have any emergency?
There's no emergency.
Continue to support your complete, there's two plans. There's the Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan and the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. Can I move approval of both in one motion?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, you could do it in one motion. If, obviously if there were issues with a split vote, you would want to do it separately.
That's fine with me, so please.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move that the board adopt the Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan and Community Wildfire Protection Plan as updated and amended and presented to us today.
I'll second the motion.
I'd move, seconded to adopt the resolution that updates the Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan and the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Sorry to make you wait all that long, but at least you got that, got that much and we'll see you again on this subject in the not-too-distant future. Again, thank you both.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, a little longer meeting than normal and usually wouldn't matter, but of course this will be the day I have to be somewhere, so.
Mr. Chair, I would be happy to read the calendar for you today.
I'm, it's short, but thank you.
Okay. Just to help you out.
I have a few. Tomorrow morning, this is places, the calendar where we'll be in the coming week, on the Thursday, the 10th, 7:30 to 9, Kaiser Marion County Meeting, Sherry's Restaurant, 4998 River Road, North Kaiser. 10:30 to 11, Cornerstone Apartments, Groundbreaking Ceremony, 3350 Portland Road Northeast. I just saw this, I'm going to be there. I think this is an important thing going on in our community and I hope people, that it's successful. Sunday, Sunday, 8:13, 4 o'clock to 8, Association of Counties, Oregon Counties Legislative Committee Retreat at Salashan Resort, 7760 Highway 101 North, Lan Eden Beach. You're just going to golf, that's all.
No, I'm not going to golf.
All right. Monday, 8:14, 8 to 5, Association Counties Legislative Committee Retreat, that's at Salashan. Tuesday, 8:30 to 9, Calendar Review, Silver Conference Room, 5th Floor, 555 Court Street, Northeast in Salem. Tuesday, the 15th, 1:30 to 2:30, a public hearing on the East Salem Service District Adopt Lighting District, Senator Hearing Room, 1st Floor, 555 Court Street, Northeast in Salem. And next Wednesday at 9, a regular board session. So, not trying to rush you out of here, is there anything else you'd like to talk about this morning?
I don't think so.
We hardly had to hear from Gloria, it's all routine, but thanks for being here. And with that, I will call this meeting adjourned.